Oh my God, I don't know how they do it.
I don't either. Okay, are we all set?
I believe that you are now all set. So I will be here if you need me. Have a good meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Very welcome, thank you.
All right, everyone, welcome, welcome, welcome to the Situate Planning Board Thursday, January 14th. Those of you that would like to participate, you may go by computer or by phone, just go to the planning boards.
On a Situate website.
On a Situate website and
Under Planning Board.
Right, and follow the instructions. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Lampert.
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein.
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard. He's here, he's connecting, I believe.
Okay.
And Bob, and Bob McLean.
Okay. All right. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a public meeting. A site plan waiver for the Situate Pantry, Inc., at 327 First Parish Road. Okay, this is Jim Hunt is going to make the presentation, and then we'll go from there. Mr. Hunt, are you available?
He raised his hands.
I mute himself.
He is available. Jim, if you're there, you can unmute yourself, and you can start your video if you so want to. If you do not know how to do that, I will ask you to. There you go.
Hi, James.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. My name is James Hunt. I live on Manlot Road in beautiful downtown North Situate, otherwise known as I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Situate Food Pantry, and I serve as treasurer, and I volunteered to lead this attempt to solve our very serious problem during these pandemic months. I've been in the Situate Masonic Lodge facility for about a dozen years. And that worked out fairly well for a while, when we had less than 100 clients, people needing assistance for food insecurity. That number is now more than tripled, and has become extremely difficult during COVID, or during the pandemic, due to the distancing requirements, requirements of the Board of Health for PPE, and limited occupation inside the building. So back in March, our hardworking director, Marie Murray, a registered nurse, by the way, conceived a pivot program to go to drive-through service only. In other words, people needing food would no longer come into the building, but would queue up in the parking lot, and as quickly as 15 minutes per car would fill out a menu form, a runner would take it inside the building, and 10 to 12, maybe as many as 14 volunteers on a good day, would assemble that order as quickly as they could and run it back out and deliver it to the vehicle in a contactless system, namely pop your trunk, here's your food, see you later. Folks, the Masonic Lodge, as wonderful as those folks have been to us, can no longer support what we do there. Storage is a critical problem. We are running eight freezers and two commercial refrigerators just to provide fresh and frozen protein, eggs, beef, pork, fish, frozen vegetables. It is an extremely difficult and time-intensive effort to coordinate all of this in a very, very small space, less than 1,300 square feet. So, after discussing all of this with the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen way back last fall, the TA very generously offered us two spaces. One was the old, or existing senior center on Brook Street, which we very carefully looked at over a two-day period and found that because it was in such bad repair, we had, we did not have the money to renovate that. Plus, storage there was a problem because the only storage space is on the second floor. It is not accessible except by a difficult stairway. So the other space he offered was the Old Gate School cafeteria, and we jumped on it. We spent quite a bit of time over three separate days, surveying the property, talking with Kevin Kelly, the Director of Facilities, mapping out what we might be able to do there. And it is a truly remarkable opportunity for us. Over 6,000 square feet of space in total, including a commercial kitchen, which is completely empty of all appliances, but it offers space to assemble food and prepackaged orders that come in. And best of all, it has walk-in freezer and walk-in refrigeration space. We just couldn't turn it down. It has two classrooms, a small office, and best of all, for the older folks on our team, it has two fully qualified and equipped restrooms.
Important.
Which the Masonic Lodge does not have. In fact, they have one restroom for everyone. So anyway, we put the package together, we submitted it to you, and you, you've seen it in your packet, I assume.
Yes.
The TA and Mr. Kelly are in the process of developing a pro forma lease for a period probably in two, three-year period was what we, which is what we told the Board of Selectmen we would need until we are ready to probably build a facility of our own. We're in the middle of a capital campaign to do that, but we're not ready yet. So, I looked at the zoning bylaw, which by strange coincidence, I hope right, way back when in the days of old, and we're asking for a waiver from Site Plan Review. We feel that our proposal is of such minimal consequence that Site Plan waiver conditions really don't apply. We anticipate no changes to the site. We anticipate no changes to the exterior of the building. We will, we do anticipate placing a sign on the property, as shown on the sketch plan that you had. The nature of our work on the inside of the building is minimal. 12 to 14 volunteers working in 6,000 square feet that probably lose sight of one another. Nature of work outside the building, we expect our clients to arrive four or five cars at a time over a two-hour period, twice a week. And that's it. Two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, for two hours, and two hours only on each day. Cars would arrive, they would queue up outside the building, outside a passing window, and we would take their orders and pass their food out the window to them to be handled by three people outside the building. One person to supervise the queuing of the cars, the lining up of the cars, the other two people to actually handle the distribution of the food. Outside the building, we'll have a sign. Our operating hours were posted in the material that you were given. Client hours are two hours on Tuesdays, two hours on Thursdays. The other days of the week were closed Sunday and Monday. On Wednesday and Friday and Saturday will be minimal work inside the building by our staff only, and that is to get ready for the next day. And on Saturday, we do receive a small delivery by private traffic. I know traffic is of concern, as always has been since this campus was was conceived. And unfortunately, one of the three main entrances to the property has been closed. So we are restricted to looking at entering the property from the newly established entrance by the new senior center off of First Parish Road, the entrance to the recreation next to the gym, which is not ideal, and the entrance off of Cudworth, down by the Situate Historical Society Building. We opted to propose using the Cudworth Road entrance only to relieve concerns by the residential abutters immediately adjacent to the property about overusing the entrance on First Parish. I have no idea, and there is no traffic study, to predict how much traffic would enter and leave that property with the senior center in full operation, plus any other operation on the campus, including ours. So we decided to propose using the Cudworth entrance only. And it would be two hours again on Tuesday, two hours on Thursday, and staff personnel incidental on the other days of the week. Staff working in the property have agreed to not park on anywhere on the site. They suggest that our staff park, and they suggested that this themselves, park at the Unitarian Church. Fortunately, the minister there is one of our Board of Directors and so graciously granted us parking privileges. And then walk to the Old Gates Cafeteria using the existing crosswalks at Beaver Dam, First Parish, Cudworth, and the sidewalk there adjacent to the ball field. And when required, we do have access to a small van, and we would be able to ferry people back and forth if it became necessary due to inclement weather or some of our more senior volunteers not being able to make that trek on a regular basis. Parking, we will not park on the property at all, except for the live parking by the client vehicles who will queue up adjacent to the south wall of the building. And that plan is also shown on the sketch that you received. We estimate that a car is in that queue for no more than 20 minutes, and a car leaves that queue every 10, probably 10 minutes, is our current experience at the Masonic Lodge. That car would then circle up, circle around the brand-new parking lot by the senior center without stopping, and would exit the property down the driveway, back to Cudworth, the way they came in. Of course, if we could use the main entrance off First Parish, they would be able to use that as well, but we don't, we don't propose doing that just to keep things on an even keel, until there is some experience. We propose no changes to the site, as I said. We do propose a sign. The sign is shown on the drawing, the dimensions are shown, the colors are shown. We ask for your approval of that as a part of this waiver process. Last but not least, safety is a major concern right now, and has been for several months. And we anticipate that we will do whatever it takes to remain safe and provide this essential service to these families who are now quite desperate for food in this time of food insecurity. Both our managing director and one of our senior staff members are both registered nurses. They've been working very closely with the Board of Health and the Health Agent, regular inspections. All the protocols are being observed. We have not had one case, not one of these folks, most of whom are senior, having a health issue as a result of their volunteering in the in the system. And hopefully, we've not had any health issues with any of the clients. Our client numbers are changing daily. Right now, we are not requiring identification. We're not registering clients except for their name just to keep our records intact. We are not means testing anyone. Donald Trump could drive up and get food at the food pantry, should he care to do so. Any one of us, any one of you could do the same. This is a critical need in Situate right now, and we are desperate to find new quarters so that we can meet that need and plan for the future. We do understand that there are traffic concerns with regard to the Cudworth Road entrance. And I wish I had known about those concerns before this afternoon at 3:30, when it was first shown to me. We did meet with the abutters on First Parish on two different, one occasion, we met in person, and we have been in constant communication with the three families directly adjacent to the west side of the campus property. And they have assured us that our proposal is not their major concern. So I do feel that it is appropriate to find that this proposal is minimal and has minimal impact on the site operations. We hope that in the future, when the senior center is up and running, and hopefully occupied soon, that we and the senior center, the recreation department, the veterans agents' operation, and the historical society can get together and come up with a reasonable plan to make this campus work as a true campus, and not just a recreation on one side, a senior center on the other side, and 90,000 square feet of empty building between. We feel that we can, we can work on this, and with the town's cooperation, which by the way, has been magnificent. The Town Administrator and his entire staff have been more than supportive in helping us to come up with this proposal. So I, I'll answer any questions you want to hear.
All right, Jim, thank you very much. I will say that we did receive a letter from the Historical Society, from Robert Chesia. I understand his concerns. He is concerned about traffic. He's concerned, and he should be concerned. However, as Jim Hunt has pointed out, this is so necessary right now in this day and age. And I think that if everyone is willing to communicate, if everyone is cautious in terms of driving through that area, it all can work out. We are all in this together. It is not mutually exclusive. It's all of us. It's all of us. And I fully support this. I know that if traffic becomes an issue, they'll be back. And he has stated that it will in fact be, hopefully, three years temporary, until they move on to something else, some other place, a better place. But for now, I think that it is imperative. And I'll open this up to my board members. Patty?
Oh, I absolutely agree that it needs to go there. Four hours a week, we could certainly sacrifice that.
Okay. Rebecca?
I'm in agreement with Patty on that one.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to see something using the Gates School, and I think that this is a really good use for it. Also, I can, given the amount of kind of site plan review we've done for this area with the Senior Center project, I can see a waiver, be in support of a waiver being granted, given we kind of have a site plan that we're currently working through. Obviously, if we have conditions, or sorry, if we have issues with traffic, et cetera, then we will like you said, we'll hear about it and we'll address it at that time. But I think right now, I don't see the point of having them go through a site plan review for this purpose.
Thank you. Bob McLean?
I agree with the group, and also like to reiterate what Ben just said about seeing how the, seeing how the traffic works out and see if we need to make any changes from there, but we shouldn't hold up the process.
Steve? Steve, you have to unmute. Mr. Pritchard?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes.
Um, I, I do appreciate the mission of the Situate Food Pantry, and it appears like this might be the sort of stopgap measure. I wouldn't know, I would only call it a stopgap measure at this point. One thing about site plan is we don't have an overall site plan. We just have the plan that was developed for the senior center. And so, you know, as you recall, one of the things that we we required out of the senior center approval was a broader plan for the use of the site. I consider this a sort of an emergency use of the site. And I would say that, you know, with that context, I would be okay with it. I do think that the traffic plan that you have planned is going to be more difficult than just coming in the main entrance. It seems like looping around the islands through the parking lot and all that is, is not really a compelling option, at least in my view. And if you're saying that a car is queuing up, you know, for 10 or 20 minutes, and you're only open two hours, twice a week, that suggests that there's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood, if you have 300, you know, clients, there's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 cars an hour through there, right? Unless I'm doing my math wrong, but I think that's what you said, is you have around 300 clients at this point. So I think it's, I think we should think about, you know, at least exiting out the main entrance as opposed to kind of looping around and going back down to Cudworth.
Okay, thank you, Steve. All right, Jim, do you have a response as far as would it be 75 cars an hour?
We have over 300 clients registered. We don't see nearly that many on a given day. Remember that they can only come, well
I'm assuming 300 clients, four hours, right?
Well, they don't all come in the same month. They can only come once or twice a month under normal circumstances. In COVID, they can come whenever we're open. But we don't see at the Masonic Lodge, we don't see more than five or six cars in the queue at a time. And at maximum during holiday hours, we see 20 cars. And that, that is almost impossible to serve at that location. It would also be difficult to serve 20 cars in two hours at Gates, but there is significantly more queue space available in the crook between the A Wing and the B Wing to, with proper supervision, to allow those cars to line up and not obstruct traffic in either direction while doing so.
And Jim, what hours would those be, those two hours, Tuesday and Thursday?
Hours were in the
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Yeah, we have client hours on Tuesday from 10:00 in the morning until 12:15. It's two and a quarter hour. You know, we have client hours on Thursdays in the afternoon from 3:30 to 5:15, which is an hour and 45 minutes. That's it. Now, we also, we also serve emergency services. If anybody has an emergency, they can call our hotline, and we will get food to them, however we need to do it. We have, we've made runs in the middle of the night sometimes. We also do home delivery on a casual basis. And right now, I think Marie Murray is on here somewhere, but I, I was told that, I'm not part of the operations team, but I was told that the Sands organization is providing drivers to help us with our home delivery to homebound residents. We have quite a few of those.
I'm just suggesting with that limited, you know, number of cars, having them loop around and go back down out Cudworth seems like we ought to just have them proceed straight out to First Parish.
And I'm happy to do that. Again, our suggestion to use Cudworth was in deference to the problems and the objections that are existing right now with some of the abutters on the west side, on the west side of the property. I have no doubt that two hours on Tuesdays and two hours on Thursdays, cars coming and going out of the First Parish entrance would not be overly objectionable, but I will bend to any conditions that you want to oppose on that. We, we are willing to use Cudworth only, but we would welcome the opportunity to use First Parish as well.
Sometimes I think that people will use whatever exit works best for them. And when the traffic, we will deal with, if there are issues with recreation, or issues with the senior center, or with historical, we'll talk about it, we'll deal with the traffic. We cannot have a traffic study until after COVID is over, and who knows when that will be? But I think that this is truly, truly a necessary use of the cafeteria. Okay, I'm going to open
Don't forget also that there's nobody else in that building, right? So, there's no maintenance going on, there's, you know, I assume somebody's heating it, but they probably have a fairly large heating system that has to be on in order to support that one space. So I don't imagine there's much in the way of physical, you know, sort of support for that space. I also understood the roof was leaking too, but but you're not proposing any physical changes to that facility.
Well, no, I'm not proposing any changes except, except for the basic infrastructure. The Town Administrator and the Facilities Department are working on a plan to secure the space from the rest of the building, and also to apportion our share of the, of the heating costs and basic utilities, electrical and so forth. That's, that, that has not been that, that is not in stone yet. They're still working on that. We're willing to
None of that's construction. It's just locking off space and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and the heating system is, is being worked on, and the building is minimally maintained. There is a custodian assigned part-time, and he makes sure that the building is secure and so forth. The Town Administrator has committed to providing all the basic infrastructure required, heat, light, handicap accessibility, and restroom space.
Are you all set, Steve?
Well, I do think we need to change the traffic pattern. I would propose that we do that.
I am not sure. Jim, when do you expect to open the food pantry?
That's, that's, that's up to our friend in the corner office. I've been talking with Jim Boudreau, Mr. Boudreau, on a weekly basis. He is working diligently. We just received an estimate to repair the refrigeration system. And I'm still trying to get myself off the floor after reading that number. But I really don't know. We, our lease with the Masons expires at the end of February. Now, they have graciously allowed us to continue that on a month-to-month basis. But our rent there is almost 340% more than it was a year ago today. And we can't continue that indefinitely.
All right, what I would like to propose is that we keep things the way they are, what you had, in terms of going in and coming out Cudworth, until we get all of our ducks in a row, until the senior center is in fact up and running, which might not be, might not be in February, it could be in March. It's probably not going to open until after COVID is done. So, I understand, Steve, your concerns, but I think that it is something that can be dealt with easily at a later date. Mr. Boudreau is on the line. Would you like to say anything, Jim?
No, I mean, the goal is to have them in there before their lease expires.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open it up to a few people. Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open it up to a few people, um, public comments.
If you have a question or a comment that you'd like to make, please, um, raise your hand on the lower left, right-hand side of your screen, or press, um, star nine if you're on the line by phone.
Shari, I think, I think, uh, Robert Chesia has a comment, Shari.
Has he raised his hand?
Yeah.
Yep. I don't see it.
It's, I do.
He's just raising it in the air?
Right, yeah.
Yep. Um, Bob, would you unmute yourself?
I'm not, I'm asking him.
Here we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, we sent this letter in, uh, rather late, but we only got a copy of it. We found the traffic plan the other day, and we were hoping that you would use the main entrance on First Parish, because if you look, I think we actually own the road in front of the Historical Society.
You know, that may be the case, Bob, but under the circumstances, I think we have to give a little to get a little. And while this may be somewhat inconvenient until the senior center opens, let's just all take a deep breath and work together. I understand your concerns. I feel that, you know, they are valid concerns, but we have to all work together. We have to, we have to do this.
Well, I, I agree with you. It's just that, I, I mean, we're all for the food pantry, don't get me wrong, but I've seen what happens with the new Gate School with the traffic. Not that there will be that many cars. I just think that if the senior center is not open and it may be, I don't know, that road is not in that good a shape. Is it going to be updated at all? Is it going to be repaved? Or do we know what's going on?
We're not really sure at this point in time. This is 10.
I understand.
You know, I, I understand your concerns. I understand your fears, but let's let this play out. And when, if you feel that this is not working, you come back and talk to us and we will deal with it. Okay?
Absolutely. I just wanted, this is the first we had a voice in anything, and I just wanted to let you know our concerns. It would absolutely fall the food pantry.
Okay.
We just want to see how it plays out.
Right. We will see how it plays out. Thank you so much. All right. Susanna Green had her hand up.
Oh, hi. Um, I just wanted to, um, mention one concern that, um, some of the neighbors in the back had. We did bring it up to Jim, um, just during the winter hours, when the cars are queued up in the back, the headlights, um, there is a concern that the headlights might be shining into some of the rear of Butters' bedrooms. And there's a section of, um, fencing, like in the back, that wasn't extended further to protect the, the furthest of Butters in the back. Um, Elaine Kickless, um, she's one of the Butters who mentioned that concern. And, um, and then I'm not sure about the people behind me, um, how, you know, because nothing's been in place yet or an active site, um, where we have the, the top of the fencing is see-through and it's not solid, so the lights might be shining through. That was just the only concern we had.
Okay. Susanna, I understand your concerns, but keep in mind that these two hours on Tuesday and two hours on Thursday are not at night, except for a very, very short period in December and early January. Um, the sun is now setting at, it's, the days are getting longer, so I, I understand, but, and we could ask them to shut their lights off while they're sitting there waiting. Okay?
Yeah, just, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, so.
Well, neither. Right. We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take one more comment and then we'll go forward.
Hi, this, am I allowed to speak? This is Mary Porter from the Trust, trustee of the Historical Society.
Okay, Mary.
Um, I just wanted to talk, it's really a bit of a safety issue, I believe. Um, the space in front of the Historical Society is a parking lot. There's approximately 30 feet between the spaces, um, on either side of that parking lot, which means that if you're turning this now into a two-lane roadway, we basically have people coming in and out of the Historical Society walking into a traffic lane. But, you know, that's still probably a legal width for a two-lane road, but as you turn the corner around the parking lot, there's a whole lane of, um, of parallel parking there. And if you measure from the end of that parallel parking to the edge of the road, it's only 18 feet. And a lane of road is typically 12 feet. So, in thinking about, you know, the cars coming in and out, I don't think the traffic from the food pantry is necessarily an issue, but if the seniors are also going to be using that as egress, um, I think it's going to be a big issue. There's several things that go on. It's not just, um, it's not just the people who want to avail themselves of the services of the food pantry. There's also, as we get into the warmer times, there's soccer, baseball, tennis, school buses, there's funerals. I mean, I think without appropriate signage, without lanes being drawn, without the space being widened, I think we're going to have a real traffic issue and potentially liability for the town if there's any fender benders or accidents. Also, you know, there's nothing saying this is an entrance, this is an exit. I mean, there, there's actually no guidance to any driver. And as we know, when, when something is new, like the new senior center, the new rec center, now the new food pantry, there's actually no guidance for anyone driving in and out of this space.
Well, that is something, Mary, that we will take under advisement. Uh, people have to, when they pull into, uh, an area like that, have to exercise caution. And hopefully they will do so. And look both ways before you cross the street. That's what we have to do. So, I appreciate your comments and.
Walking is one thing, cars are another. A 3,000-pound vehicle is a little bit different than looking both ways and passing a person. I mean, I, I really think this should be carefully considered by the town, because I think you're opening up the whole town of taxpayers to liability here.
Uh, excuse me, Jim, would you please comment on that, please? Mr. Boudreau?
Which one?
Mary's concern about the Historical Society and traffic.
I mean, the amount of.
Safety issue is primary, is the primary one.
Mary, thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I don't think the amount of cars in there change any, that, that the senior center is going to have changes any of the safety parameters now. Um, I'm confused as to what the new, uh, recreation center is, or the recreation center's been there all along. So, uh, you do have a couple of times in the summertime when tennis is playing, uh, where there's a lot of cars in and out of there, but that won't be the same time as the senior center's acting. So, for the most part, the senior center is not going to be, or the side, the food pantry is not going to be interacting at the same time that the peak periods for recreation are going to be. So, um, anytime we do anything, we have liability, but, uh, it's not something that I'm worried about.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, any further comment from the board?
Yeah, and can I just say that, uh, there's nobody at the recreation aisle, and there's really nobody at historic. It is a huge need for the food pantry, so we need to kind of throw a little bit caution to the wind, and hopefully, uh, better senses will prevail.
I agree.
Well, could I speak to that too? Because I, I don't think anybody on this call or in this meeting has said they don't support having the food. We're just trying to get sort of a box, the most, the best traffic flow that we can. And we'll have to look at it, right, when we do the traffic study.
Yes, we do.
But I, I think, I think that the proposal that exists here, that has people leaving the queue, doing 180-degree loop and going back out the same way, seems to me, you know, not the ideal, right? That, that we ought to just have people leaving the queue and going out at First Parish. And let's start with that and see how that works.
Well, let's get people moved into the food pantry and we'll go from there, Steve. And we'll figure it out, what is.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going to discuss the traffic pattern here, then I'm saying we ought to amend the traffic pattern that they've proposed to say, no, don't do this 180-degree loop and go by all the queued cars, just go out First Parish.
And could I make a comment?
Yes.
I mean, maybe, maybe with the, um, with the conditions of the waiver, maybe we say the traffic pattern shall be described in the letter, except that the exit on First Parish Road may be used under this waiver.
Okay.
So, so that you, um, try to take Steve's, Steve's point of view into account and gift, give the option for, for that to be done.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
That's fine with the food pantry.
All right. Okay, I have a motion. Move that the planning board finds improvements to the old cafeteria at the Old Gates Middle School in the B-Wing basement at 327 First Parish Road for the Situate Food Pantry, Inc., to include the proposed inside building, work of painting, adding a sink and cosmetic improvements. No outside changes to the exterior of the building will be made. If, however, the existing window in the cafeteria basement is inoperable as a serving window, it will be replaced. No other site work is proposed other than a sign at the southwest corner of the existing A-Wing, along with an outside closed box for food drop-offs, all of which is minor in nature of effect. No changes to the parking lot are proposed at this time. But.
And?
Yep. Uh, move to grant. I just did the suggested motion, and then it's moved to grant. There's nothing else.
We were going to add a sentence about.
And we're going to add it as a condition.
As a condition. I just need to have you approve this motion. Is there a second on the motion?
No, and the mo, the motion's the whole thing.
All right, fine. Move to grant the site plan waiver for the Situate Food Pantry, Inc., for improvements to old cafeteria at the Old Gates Middle School in the B-Wing basement at 327 First Parish Road with the following conditions. One, construction shall comply with the improvements described in a letter dated December 3, 2020, from the Situate Food Pantry, Inc., to the Situate Planning Board and Town Planner, submitted with the application and attached to this approval. Two, approval is contingent upon all local approvals being obtained from the town of Situate. Traffic patterns shall be described. And how do you want to change this, please?
Traffic patterns shall be described in the bu, above letter, except that the exit on First Parish Road may be used under this waiver.
Okay, may be used under this waiver.
And then any other changes?
And any other changes?
To, then keep reading that sentence.
Any other changes, um, shall require notification of the planning board, who shall determine if any additional review is required. For no parking for food pantry staffers is anticipated on-site. Staff parking is being provided at the First Parish Unitarian Church on the north side of First Parish Road. Staff will either be ferry to the food pantry or will use the existing sidewalks and crosswalks at the intersection of First Parish, Beaver Dam, and Cudworth Roads. Should food pantry workers need to park on-site, further planning board review may be required. Five, hours of operation of the food pantry are generally limited to Tuesday. Staff 8:30 a.m. to 12:45 p.m. Client hours 10 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. Wednesday, staff 3:30 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. High School Community Service Program. Thursday, staff 1:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. Client hours 3:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. Friday, staff 9:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Saturday, staff 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. Six, coordination with programming of the Recreation Center must be done prior to occupancy. Seven, coordination with the Situate Historical Society on traffic must occur prior to occupancy. And finally, um, a refund of $100 for the application fee for the nonprofit organization who benefits the community will be processed. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Yes. Say yes, Patty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
We lost him again.
He was just, yeah, he's here.
He is there. He is a co-host. He can unmute himself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unanimous all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Jim.
Thank you all for your attention. Uh, it is cocktail hour, so I'm signing out of here. Bye-bye.
Good night.
I think you need to share.
Anytime, anytime.
Okay, thank you so much. You too. All right. The next item on our agenda is, okay, a public hearing, continued public hearing, stormwater and site plan administrative review, Common Driveway 16, 18 through 20, Man Hill Road. And I have in my hot little hand somewhere, a move to continue.
Withdraw.
A move to withdraw this, um, site plan review.
And stormwater permit.
And stormwater permit, sorry. Uh, all those in favor?
Do you want here?
We have too many pieces of paper. Okay, um, I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the pending stormwater permit and common driveway site plan administrative review for 16, 18, and 20, Man Hill Road. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbara?
Hi.
Ms. Lambert?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Thank you.
Mr. Pritchard, but can I just ask you to put, turn your video on?
I'm sorry, I'm connected by my phone because of, uh, internet issues. Let me try.
Okay, that's fine.
You're fine. You're fine. As long as we, there you are.
I don't know how long that'll last, but we'll try.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, discussion vote for senior center signage at 333 First Parish Road. All right, um, Karen, would you like to talk to this, please?
Uh, well, I think Rachel Young is going to do the presentation.
Yeah, let me just get to her one moment, please.
Rachel is a co-host now, so Rachel, if you want to start your video and unmute yourself, you can do that.
Hey, everyone. Good to see, um, see everyone. I haven't seen in a while. Just give me one second to share my screen. So, this is the package that I had submitted to the planning board in December. Um, and I'll just go through the slides to explain what we're proposing at the senior center. So, the first image is just a view of the site as you're approaching from the west. Just shows you what available real estate, if you will, there is in the building. Because we have a considerable amount of plantings along the west property line, and the fence actually wasn't installed yet, but the, the fence that we have at the property line now, the, both the fence and the vegetation mean that you wouldn't actually see very much of the side of the building as you're approaching from the west. And so, that was a concern to us about where we located the final signage. Um, if you remember, what we proposed initially was signage standoff lettering that was mounted to the side of the building. So, what we're really looking at now is finding the appropriate space or location, I should say, for that, um, standoff lettering. So, then the second image is just as you get closer to the building, um, again, what areas of the elevation are visible. And it shows locating the numbers 333, which is the address now, 333 First Parish. Um, and they're located at the northwest corner. Um, that location was determined in consultation with the Fiducite Fire Department. They wanted the address, the numbers 333 on the prime, um, side of the building that faces First Parish. And then what you can also see is where we're proposing signage. It's very light because this is aluminum, um, aluminum standoff lettering, so it's a lighter, um, silver color. But that would be located at the pediment that's located here. Again, most prominent location on First Parish. This is from the. This is from the east, if you're approaching from the harbor, and the red box is just indicating that's where we're proposing the signage. Again, it's the most visible from the east and you can get an indication of it from the west as well. This is an elevation of the north elevation that faces First Parish. So we would put Situate Senior Center in the white pediment and then the numbers 333 again would go in that northwest corner. This is an elevation of the west side of the building to show the signage that we're proposing in the vicinity of the main entrance, the front door, if you will, to the senior center. What we had noted previously or proposed previously in our previously submitted package was, again, has standoff lettering but located at the frieze of the porch, so located just above the porch entrance. And what we would prefer is to do something that's a little lower, a little more eye level because now you're transitioning, whereas the signage at the front of the building on First Parish is really oriented towards vehicles as a wayfinding means, the signage that's close to the door really should be located more at eye level if someone is walking towards the building. And so we wanted to lower the signage and do something a little more unique reflecting the senior center's brand, if you will. And so what we're proposing, and forgive me because there's a little discrepancy between the two elevations, but what we're proposing is locating the signage as shown in this enlarged doo-in close up of the front porch, of having a black metal sign between the two windows. And while in the elevation it's blocked by the column, in fact, when you're approaching the building, it's completely visible. So that's the location we're proposing. And then the last couple of images are just some details of what that signage would be. So this is a precedent where it's a blackened metal that's cut out. And so what you're seeing behind is the siding of the building. So in our case, it would be you'd see white behind the black. And then these are shop drawings that were submitted by the sign company, the sign subcontractor. I'm just showing the dimensions and the location. And then these are the shop drawings for the standoff lettering.
Okay, thank you. All right. Karen, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I would just recommend to the board that they approve this signed package as a minor change, not requiring a public hearing. I mean, signage was shown on the original plans and they're just merely, in fact, changing the location to try to have it more visible for more people to see and putting numbers, which the fire department recommended. So I would highly support that.
Comments from the board? Patty?
It just kind of looked like the signage that's on the fire, police station. Is that what it looks like, that raised aluminum lettering?
I'm not familiar with the signage on the police station, but that, what you're describing sounds similar. I don't know. Steve might be more familiar with that.
It's almost impossible to read against the white background.
With the white, okay.
It's, it's really difficult to see what it says there.
I would, I would have to look. I'd be happy to drive by, you know, when I'm usually on site on Wednesdays, I'd be happy to drive by the police station to see what it looks like.
Okay.
Lettering that we typically do is, is, you know, our, our standard lettering, if you will, for projects like this.
Yep. Okay, just observation.
And I have to say, Patty, I agree with you.
Yep.
You can't rea- you can't read it.
I see it every day. I, I try to read, yep.
Okay. All right, Ben?
No, I don't really have any problems with this. I feel like it's pretty minor and I think that it looks, looks decent to me.
Okay. Rebecca?
I don't have any issues with it.
Okay, Bob?
No issues.
Steve?
No, it looks fine to me.
All right. I move to approve the building signs as shown in the Situate Senior Center signed package dated 12/21/20 as a minor change, not requiring a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you. Unanimous all in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And again, good to see, good to see all of you.
Thank you. All right, now we are moving on to Form A at 141 Driftway. Applicant owner, John Tedeschi. Is he with us this evening or is it Greg Morse? Who do we have?
This is, yep, this is Greg Morse. I'm here for John.
Okay, all right. Would you like to make your presentation?
Thank you. For the record, this is Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owner, John Tedeschi. This is a Form A application for property located at 141 Driftway. Driftway is a public road on the list of public roads on record at the town clerk's office. The three lots that we're proposing at this property all comply with the requisite frontage in land area for the R2 zoning district, which is what this is in. The plan is entitled to endorsement under subdivision regulations.
Okay. I have to say that I have a real problem with one of these lots. It doesn't show it on the plan, which is unfortunate because it's a five-foot drop from the street. How do you propose to enter that lot?
Which lot are you referring to?
For A.
A.
A. We'll be doing a driveway off of the Driftway to access the front of that lot. Probably be a 12-foot wide paved driveway that you would see on any other single-family home project.
And will you be filling that five-foot drop?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
This isn't, we're, we're not really making any decisions on development, though.
No, we're not. Yeah.
Division of land.
Right. Okay, we have comments from the sewer division. Are you aware of them, Greg?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and we have comments from the water department and you're aware of that as well?
Yes, I'm aware of the, of the water department and we will be making application when it comes time to develop the lots to both of those departments.
Okay, fine. All right, any further comments from the board? Okay, I move to endorse as approval not required a plan of land in Situate, Mass. showing division of 141 Driftway, assessors parcel 641012, stamped by Douglas L. Auerberg, PLS, for applicant owner, John Tedeschi, dated 12/16/20, as the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the town, by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Driftway. Planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to the conformance with zoning regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you unanimously all in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a Form A for Clapp Road. Is this yours too, Greg?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to tell us what this is all about?
Again, for the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owners, Lawrence and Leslie Stenbeck, for their property located at 71 Clapp Road. This is a division of their property into two lots. Clapp Road is a road that is a public road on record with the town clerk's office. Both of the lots proposed comply with the area requirements and the frontage requirements for the R1 zoning district in which it is located. The plan is entitled to endorsement.
Karen, do you have any comment?
While the plan may be entitled to endorsement, the applicant should be reminded that there may need to be scenic road approval further down the line if the existing driveway, if a driveway is going to go in the existing stone wall opening and it's not wide enough.
It's noted on the plan that the roadway is a scenic road. We're aware of the application requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment from the board? Okay. I move to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law, not required, a plan of land in Situate, Mass. Showing a division of parcel 24-2-15, 71 Clapp Road, by Douglas L. Auerberg, Professional Land Surveyor of Morse Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant Lawrence K. and Leslie Stenbeck dated December 7, 2020, as the division of land is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Thomas Clapp Road, a scenic road. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you unanimously all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Time just sets.
At eight o'clock.
We have to wait till eight o'clock.
You could do minutes and accounting and then go into liaison reports if you'd like to do that.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting minutes for December 10, 2020.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Unanimous all in favor. Thank you.
I move to approve the requisition of $149.52 for the legal ad for six McDonald Terrace, for $1,342.50 to Chester Consulting for peer review of 48-52 new Driftway gas backwoods, for $152.06 to Karen Joseph for mileage reimbursement, for $450 to Merrill Corporation for the peer review of 92 Neilgate Street, for $35.06 to W.B. Mason for office supplies, for $1,392 to Horstley Witten for peer review services for Phase 2 at Seaside at Cituate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis? Thank you unanimously all in favor.
Okay, next we have. What else do we have going on here? Correspondence. Do we have any correspondence? Karen?
Um, no.
Liaison reports. Has anybody been out and about?
No. No.
Hi, hi.
No, I went to traffic rules on Tuesday night and there was discussion on 7th Driftway in terms of streetlights. So that went on for a little while. And also to, that had to do with Chris Skinzello and the Jacob Hatch property. He feels that it's just too dark along the Driftway. So that is being referred, I think, to DPW and the selectmen in terms of new lighting or turning on existing lighting, if there is any. And then there was a walk-in, Jennifer Kuhn, was very concerned about sidewalks and access around the recreation tennis court, senior center, Cudworth, et cetera. And she was referred to the selectmen because that's not the purview of traffic rules and regulations. Went to CPC on Monday night and they pulled, they pulled border street. There was no discussion on that. Discussion on Chief Justice Cushing Highway has been, the purchase of that has been put off until February. The town is in the process of trying to get an appraisal for that piece of property. So there's, you know, this stuff going on and we do have some money. I mean, we got quite a bit from the state. I think it was over $500,000. So we have over a million dollars in our kitty, if you want to call it that. We approved $100,000 for rent, rental, for the rents for people that need it. So that's, what's, what for these two nights? Anything else from anybody?
We're still on the reviewing the town charter.
What page are you on, Rebecca?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but we still have a way, ways to go. But we're getting there.
Slowly but surely. Ben, how's master plan coming?
So, yes, I was about to say something. You should have all received a link to the latest version of the draft. And the idea is that we'll have the advisory committee and any members of the planning board that want to submit the next, to this next round of written comments. We would like that due next week, I think. I think we had picked the 19th as the day deadline for that. So if you could start reviewing that if you haven't already and just put in your two cents or any edits or comments that you have and kind of get that back to me or Emily or Karen. One of us can send it along to Emily if, if, if you don't have her contact information. And, and then we'll be trying to schedule an advisory committee meeting shortly after that. I'm going to try to send out an email probably tomorrow to just get on everyone's radar again because we, I don't think anyone commented to her last, or responded to her last email. So try to get that scheduled and then kind of take a temperature on there to see if we think we're going to get this ready for town meeting. I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done to really make it kind of the best document and the best plan that it can be. So I'm just curious to see what you all think after kind of reviewing it. But it's definitely, we're making progress and hopefully, hopefully we can, we can get there. But we'll, we'll, we'll just see what happens, I guess.
Okay, thank you. I just want to sort of base, base a concern here or bring up a concern. It seems, there was one section in, and then Emily took it out about we're building bigger houses because that's what people want. And I'm not sure that we do.
She changed that.
She changed it.
She changed that.
But one of the things that I'm noticing, zoning board of appeals meets a week from tonight and out of the six items on their agenda, four of them are raise and reconstruct on non-conforming lots, which means probably elevations and bigger houses. So, you know, I worry about zoning, about the zoning board because it appears that they pretty much acquiesce to just about everything. Patty, have you been watching them?
Yeah, I don't think they ever say no. I, I really don't. And it's really disconcerting to, to hear them. My feeling is that they come to us, they're denied and they go to zoning. This is, it's kind of, i- it's kind of futile at some point, I think, when they come to us. And I don't, they never want to talk to us. We, we never seem to be able to meet or with building as well. So I think that's a huge concern for communication between the three boards.
Right. And when we sent them the letter on Man Hill, other than the chair, I don't think, I, I think you'd agree, Patty, nobody read it.
No. And he was, and he, the chair was very concerned about our, about the issues that Karen put forward in the, in the letter and nobody else seemed to even give notice to them.
Okay. Any comments on the board, about, from the board about that? About zoning issues?
Well, I, you know, I guess one of the, one of the issues, just, just an observation, is that to the extent that people are asking for raise and reconstruct, that is, that is something that's within the, the allowances within zones, right? I mean, it's structured in a way that people are allowed to ask for that. So unless we change the criteria or the approach on how it's done, it seems like the zoning board is doing what they're charged and allowed to do within the context of the zoning bylaws, right? I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking to change, I guess.
I, I guess what I'm asking, Steve, more than anything else, and it goes back to a, a raise and reconstruct on, I think it was Otis, up off the harbor.
Yeah.
And it was a very small house. And, you know, one of the things that zoning, the zoning board of appeals has to do is be cognizant of the impact on the neighborhood. And this was a raise and reconstruct and to be built back to, you know, 80% more than what it was into a big, big house. And that, that, I think that's an issue. In terms of, you know, they're required to basically talk about how this affects the neighbors. And nobody seems to want to talk about that.
No, and I think one of the things that we ask is a general overview of the neighborhood and they never ask for that to see like what's around there.
I mean, if you go to 950.3 procedure under zoning bylaw, A, the specific site is an appropriate location for the use of the structure. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, among other things. So it's just a concern of mine, that's all.
I, I mean, to your point, Anne, I mean, I, I agree with you. I, I think it's tough because like so much of what they do based off these like section six findings or whatever with the non-conforming lots or non-conforming structures is, is, it's very, it's highly subjective. And it's, it's really hard sometimes to make a decision, I guess, one way or the other about how it might adversely affect people. And I, I'm not saying, I, I'm not going to comment on whether I think they're doing a good job or not or whether I agree all the time, but it is definitely very subjective. And I do think that, I mean, obviously I'm not also advocating for being litigious or anything, but it's my understanding that in certain cases, the planning board has standing to appeal decisions of the zoning board. And if we ever felt strongly enough, I think we could. And, and I'd rather not do that, I'd rather form like to Patty's point about having joint meetings or something, I'd rather try to get on the same page and kind of work together. But I, I, I also echo your concerns, I guess, with kind of how things have been going in terms of the build out of the town the last several years, really.
Well, then isn't it really, and I, I realize that we've all been really busy, but, and we're hopefully going to be working on zoning, we're working on North Cituit right now. But isn't a way to address this by floor area ratio, lot coverage restrictions?
I think that's the only way you're going to, you know, sort of institute it, institute it in a way that's not as subjective, right? If you don't change the, the criteria, then it's going to be what it's going to be. And, and it's going to be left to everybody's sort of, you know, subjective opinion, if you will. If we want to introduce additional components that should be covered, then that's, that probably speaks to a zoning bylaw change that requires those, you know, specific components to be considered or addressed. But I don't, I don't think we're going to do it in sort of an ad hoc way. I mean, I, I agree with Ben that we ought to communicate with and work with the zoning board, but maybe we ought to do that in a way that we're both working to, you know, actually change some of the criteria in the zoning bylaw. If, if we can, assuming we can all get on the same page on that.
Well, maybe.
I just don't, go ahead.
Maybe what we might want to do is ask for a joint meeting, invite them to come and talk to us. And just have an informal discussion about what we see, what they see, and go forward from there. Let's talk to them. Of course.
I think, I think that could be useful, I think it would be useful to have some notion of the kinds of tools that we need in the bylaw to help change the direction, right? And we, we ought to, instead of just talk, we ought to have sort of a proposed, let's, let's talk about these kinds of, you know, as Karen talked about, you know, the, the floor area ratios and our lot area ratios and, you know, let's, let's lay out those kinds of things and what they're intended to protect for the town of Cituit. But I'd be happy to participate in a conversation, although it's going to have to be virtual until the vaccine shows up.
Right, yeah. Everything's virtual for quite some time. Okay.
But I mean, Karen, what do, what do you think is going to be the, if we were to make one or two changes that would, would facilitate, you know, trying to get sort of mass, massing ratios and stuff sort of in place? What, what are the, what are the tools that we should be considering that maybe other towns have already implemented?
I mean, it's floor area ratio and lot coverage and we may have to do some of both. And we're going to have to, I think we're going to have to cater it to. We have different residential zones with different lot areas. We're going to have to make a, you know, really be very careful in thought of how it relates to the lot area in, in certain districts.
Well, I think we could be careful in thought as long as it works.
Right, so I think that that's, I mean, I'm saying that perhaps that's, that's part of a bylaw that we need to start working on after, after this town meeting. I also believe we need to take care of the rat tail issue.
Oh, absolutely.
Because that is an issue that is, you know, that, that's getting worse.
I would agree, I would agree with you there. And what takes care of that, the lot area ratio?
A lot shape factor.
Lot shape factor. And what is, what is that? And I know we've probably got a meeting coming up soon, but.
We have 12 minutes, let's keep this going.
So what is the lot shape factor?
Well, I have to, I have to do some research into it, I mean, but a lot of towns restrict strips that are certain, certain widths, they can't be less than a certain width. It can't be less than a certain, any tails can't be less than a certain percentage of the perimeter. There's putting a circle in a square. There's multiple, there's multiple ways to handle this. And I reached out to our, the consultant who worked on the sign bylaw and I have asked her what her experience is, excuse me, in working with rat tails. I mean, because there are conditions that we probably want to prohibit. I mean, you probably want to prohibit sewer strips because we have people who will carve a 10-foot wide strip out to a road that is sewer as part of their lot area, just so they can get sewer. And so.
I just, I just found an interesting sort of presentation by the town of Shrewsbury about that exact issue, which I will forward to you. But they're, they're defining the lot shape factor as the lot size multiplied by 16 divided by the perimeter of the lot squared.
It's not an easy, it's not an easy solvable, it's not a really easy thing to do. But I think we have to really start getting into and tackling it because what we're seeing, some of these things are just really egregious.
Yeah. Well, I'll send this to you. I think this is, this might be useful reading.
I would be interested in that.
Okay.
I also sent the historic policy back to the historic commission today and I said, what's the progress? The planning board, you know, we left off a year ago on that and we want to pick that back up. So I'm trying to follow up on that. I'm going to be sending you all next week or maybe tomorrow, a proposed revised fee schedule.
Yes.
The fees in this town have not been updated since 2003.
Whoa.
It's time.
It is time.
So.
And when you talk fees, you're talking like building fees and those kinds of things?
No, app, planning board application.
Oh, planning board application, okay.
Building department has, is constantly changing their fees, but the planning board fee schedule hasn't been updated in a long time. And it's well overdue.
Yep.
The housing production plan was approved by the state, which I sent to all that. So that's off of our plate right now. And we just got seven new units on the subsidized housing inventory today. All the back, the back units from Walden Woods have all been added now.
Good job Karen, very good job.
Thank you. Shari and I worked hard on putting that together and it was, we are very happy. February 11th is going to be your zoning public hearing. At that time, we'll propose to have the three zoning articles under three separate public hearings, but all in one night. Next time, we'll be having a zoning workshop for the sign bylaw and in the inclusionary zoning. In addition to 4852 new Driftway, which I sent a draft decision on that and would appreciate any comments you have on that. Seaside at Cituit is, you know, going gangbusters. Construct, it's, it's very busy down there. There's probably, we have probably close to 60 units that have been given occupancy permits. They, they put in a little, they put in some additional fencing over in the phase two area and some phasing, some fencing over by the property border on Tilden Road that's the closest neighbors of Rainbow Court. It's, you know, it's a white PVC vinyl fence, it looks very nice. And they're out there planting the buffers on those areas. They've been doing that the past two weeks. That's, I mean, we, we have a lot going on and come springtime, we will be seeing several projects come into the construction phase. Drew Company is still, excuse me, projected to start construction this spring.
That's good.
They, the building permit plans are in. And so I should be getting a look at those probably next week to make sure that what they actually submitted is consistent with the revised elevations that you approved this summer.
Could you give us a bit of an update on Ann Vinyl, those wonderful people?
Ann Vinyl is undergoing construction. I believe I signed off on one building permit. I have to sign off on another building permit tomorrow. And some of them are on hold due to back taxes being owed. We had a little bit of a issue with one of the lots not doing pervious pavement and it just got to be, the emails were so harassing, I'm sorry, I signed off on it. But it was under the, it was under the square footage allowed for that lot. I certainly hope that they're marketing these that, you know, there's no room for pools, there's really no additional impervious area that's going to be allowed on these lots because they're at their, they're pretty much at their maximum capacity.
Karen, does something like that get flagged at the building department? So nobody issues a building permit for those kinds of things?
For which, which things?
Like a pool.
Like a pool, like, you know, in, in an area that doesn't have any available.
I remind them all the time, I mean, I am still waiting for the revised documents for their home, revised homeowners association that says no pools. I've been asking for this now for multiple months and they, they're just not very cooperative. They, they did, they, they were working on New Year's Day, they got a fine and I got an email today that the payment is being sent in. So, I mean, we are, we're doing the best we can to enforce all the conditions that we put on projects. I think I tallied the fines from Toll Brothers last year and I think, I think we, I issued about $42 to $4,500 in fines to Toll Brothers. Well, you know, it's called dust control. You have to, you have to control your dust and, you know, when it's, when you have blowing dust going around, it's, it's, it's a nuisance and it's, it's a health hazard. And you know, we try to enforce all those things.
Okay, we have three minutes until our public hearing. So let's get ourselves together for that one. Carrie, do we have the notice for the public hearing?
I don't, but I can get it for you. You don't have it.
I don't? Do we know who will be speaking for this public hearing?
Mr. Oliver is here, he does not have his video, but he does have audio.
All right, great.
Mr. Farwell will be speaking for us.
Okay. And Mr. Bajorklin?
How are we tonight?
Oh, it is so wonderful to see you.
I love doing these Zoom meetings, there's nothing better than this. Just for the record, I know a letter went in today, I think Karen got it.
It's not eight o'clock yet.
Well, have a drink, I don't know what's in there, but have a drink Karen while we're waiting.
It's water.
Okay, I'll go with that. My drink's waiting for after the meeting.
All right. We have one more.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. All right, here we go. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11, and with Cituit zoning bylaw, Section 530, accessory dwelling special permit and Section 940 referrals, the planning board will conduct a public hearing at 8:00 PM on Thursday, January 14, 2021, in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Cituit Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owner Phil and Suzanne Oliver for an accessory dwelling special permit within an existing detached garage at property located at 418 Country Way, Cituit. Property is shown on Assessor's Map Block Parcel 32-8-9. Plans are available for review in the Planning Board Office, Town Hall, Cituit, by appointment only. Participation in the public hearing for abudders and other interested parties will be via remote access only. Please call the Planning Board Office at 781-545-8730 for additional information. Thank you very much. Okay, who's making the presentation? Is it you, Mr. Bajorklin?
Yes, it is, we're lucky tonight.
That is a matter of opinion.
That's okay. This is, believe it or not, this is actually a very, very simple application and it meets all of the requirements. I got pulled into this yesterday, actually last night and trying to help the applicant make sure that the paperwork was correct so that you guys could actually vote on this application. But the Olivers are on Country Way, they have somewhat of a dilapidated garage out there now. I don't know if anybody's been by the side or not.
I've seen it, yeah.
Okay, the, the lots in our, our two districts, so they need 20,000 square feet. They've got over 40,000 square, square feet of land area with no wetlands, it's all uplands. I think the site. I think the site plan went in. I don't know if anybody can put it up, or if you've all seen the site plan that, that unfortunately came in today, because, uh, I just realized today that they had an existing conditions plan done by Morse, but, uh, nobody had requested something to show the change in the garage. Uh, I think they felt it was a minimum size, but I, I knew that you guys would want to know exactly what they were doing for the size, and to make sure it would meet the setbacks and all that. So, their intent is to take down the existing garage, build a new garage with a second floor for the accessory dwelling, and they plan on using the garage area on the first floor for their own, uh, cars, and they plan on still parking in that portion of the driveway. The site plan that you see does have two additional parking spots on the right-hand side of the property, about halfway down the driveway, that are already constructed, and, uh, that's basically overflow parking for them right now, but, but we had to designate two spots, uh, for this particular use, which they have way, way more space than what they need. So, the updated site plan, which they've got up there now, shows that we're going to maintain the left-hand side of the garage, that setback at 72 feet, and they're going to maintain the front of the garage, so I think you can see lightly underneath there the dimensions of the old garage. Uh, on the backside, we're actually cutting, I think, three and a half feet off the back of the garage and putting it to the side, and the reason for that is they're going to have a staircase on the interior of the building on the right-hand side, which is going to take up probably half of that new area on the first floor of the garage. As far as the criteria is concerned, they had their septic system, uh, tested, and it did pass Title V. They are, uh, have worked with the Board of Health. They're going to remove one of the bedrooms inside the house, and the closet and stuff is going to be removed from it. It's going to become a at-home office, because now they both work from the house, so they're going to use that, and they don't need the bedroom. Um, it's oversized for them, but they do need the office space, so they will probably end up with a deed restriction from the Board of Health as far as the amount of bedrooms that they have, because they're, they don't want to go out and change the septic system. If they chose to, they probably could do that and, and do another septic system, but at this point in time, they're just looking for the office, and they're ready to apply for that interior change in those walls as well. As far as the intent of the bylaw, this couple would like to stay in the dwelling and stay in the town of Situate, and they're looking for some help in paying their taxes and getting a little bit of income, so they certainly meet, as far as I can see, all the criteria that you guys would be looking for. And as far as stormwater is concerned, it's a very minimal change out here. There's a small expansion on the driveway that you can see, and a, a small expansion on the building itself, and the building is going to be about 180 square feet larger than what's existing now, and just that small area on the driveway. And really, we'll just ask some questions if anybody, or we'll answer questions if anybody has any. I think it's pretty straightforward.
All right, Steve, um, I see in the left elevation and the rear elevation that you've got, uh, stairs coming from a door.
Yeah, they have to have two means of egress.
I know, and that's why I'm asking this. Where is it, where does that stairway come from? The dining area, the great room, where?
Right now, I don't have the floor plan in front of me, so give me a second, see if I can pull that up here. Paper copy here. Okay. It's coming, is this a great room right here?
Yes.
Yeah, it's coming off, it's the center of the back of the building, so it's going to come out of the great room, which is obviously the largest open room in the, in the, uh, the dwelling.
Okay, because it's not shown on the upper floor plan.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm looking right at it.
A new floor plan was submitted.
Yeah, the new floor plan that was submitted that shows that, Anne, you could have a, an old one.
I must have an old one.
Okay, it, it, we, we clearly have it, and we'll make sure that you've got a copy, but the one I'm looking at right now definitely has one, uh, on the side of the building and one on the rear of the building, so it does meet that criteria.
Okay.
I, I don't see that floor plan either, so.
It's penciled in on the elevations, uh, where, where you're going to say it. And we have, we did, we did send you a revised floor plan.
When, when did you, I, I, the one I'm looking at is, no, well, there's no date on it.
November 19th, 2020.
Yeah, there was a, there's a floor plan December 16th that, um, we included, and it, uh, shows it coming off, the stairs in the back coming off the, uh, living room.
All right, as long as it's there.
It's there.
And obviously, that would be a condition anyway, because they wouldn't get a building permit without that.
Right, okay. Just to be sure, we have to cover our bases here, Stephen.
Absolutely.
All right. Any comments from the board, please? Karen, first, we'll start with you.
No, I, I wrote a draft decision. This, this is, um, the accessory dwelling meets all the criteria. I would recommend, um, approving it with the, uh, with the findings of fact and the, uh, and the conditions that are, that you standardly use.
Okay. All right, members of the board, Patty.
I'm fine, thank you.
Ben.
No, nothing at this time.
Rebecca?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Bob?
Nothing for me.
Steve?
Yeah, just one question. I, I, I'm not familiar with this lot. Is, is there any, anybody, uh, adjacent to this, this, um, property that would be in the back there next to this?
There are some neighbors on the east side of this property that, uh, should have been notified for this hearing, and they may be on. I don't know all the names that are up here, but when you go to public comment, if anybody has an issue, they are absolutely free to talk.
Yeah, so there's, there's a neighbor adjacent to the garage on the east side?
Yes.
Okay, and is there lighting on this garage?
Nothing more than just door, door lights, you know, when you come out, a regular lamp light outside the door, just to make it safe to go down the stairs.
But not big, uh, they would be, uh, shrouded lights or covered lights? They wouldn't be floodlights?
Yeah, it's not, it's not floodlights or anything pointing towards any neighbors or anything like that. It's, it's downlighting.
Thank you.
They'd be coming down the flight of stairs on the, on the exterior of the building, uh, and behind it, where that staircase, the exterior staircase would be, uh, you can see that he, he owns, I can't even see how far it is, but 100 and something feet behind the building.
Plenty of room back there. I was just really thinking about the neighbors.
Yeah, and on the side towards the neighbors, I don't think there's any exterior lighting right there.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there anyone that would like to comment from the public, please?
Yep.
It looks like somebody named Allison.
Yep, we're getting to, we're getting to her.
Okay.
Just please remember to identify yourselves. State your name and address, please.
Hi, Allison Short, 129 Branch Street. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I live, uh, behind the property. I'm just wondering, is there going to be a new, um, foundation put in, or is it going to go on the slab that's already there?
It's going to be a brand-new foundation.
So, you're going to dig into the ground and disperse more water? I have, I have a.
Can I respond to that, Allison?
Say it again?
Okay, what, what they're going to do, there's, there's no basement under the garage. There's a slab that's there existing right now.
Right.
So, they're, they're basically going to be adding about 180 square feet of area for slab. That's about it, so 10 by 18.
But, but you're, you're digging, you're going to dig a foundation, like, into the ground?
Yeah, what's there now should be frost walls on the building, and that's capped with a slab, so it'll basically be the same thing. The dimension by 180 square feet.
Um, just my concern is, we have a pretty wet backyard already. It got wetter from a, um, house that was built two lots over. We have an empty lot next to us, and then there was a house built two lots over, and our property has become wetter in the backyard. That's my only concern, that, um, that water has to disperse somewhere, and it's going to be sent right into my backyard again.
Well, the, the only comment that I would have on that, and again, I'm not an engineer myself, but I've been doing this 35 years, um, they're not going to be directing or grading anything towards your site in there. The grading is going to stay exactly the same, and I would guess that if the home that's next to you created a water issue, they probably raised it out of the ground and graded things towards your lot. That's not what's going to happen here. This is going to be right at the grade.
Great, that's super. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Sure, thank you, Allison.
Anybody else? No? Okay. All right.
Can we hear a motion?
Oh, Stephen. You're too funny. I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on November 20, 2020, Philip and Suzanne Oliver applied for a special permit for detached accessory dwelling on the property at 418 Country Way. Two, according to the Town of Situate's Assessor's records and the deed, the property at 418 Country Way is owned by Philip and Suzanne Oliver. Based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 660 gross square feet and 220, 624 net square feet. The application indicates that this is 25% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is 2,472 square feet, according to the applicant. The Assessor's card indicates the net square footage of the home to be 2643 square feet. This meets the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, as the bylaw allows 750 square feet are 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinated to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a completely separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Two, the properties in the residential R2, the proposed detached accessory dwelling structure meets all the required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is proposed to be located on the second floor to be added to an existing detached garage. Access will be via an internal staircase inside the two-car garage. There is a secondary access via a back door and a stairway from the accessory dwelling unit. This is located at the rear of the building. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the existing conditions plan 418 Country Way, Situate, Mass, dated 6/20 by Morse Engineering, Inc., shows a bituminous concrete driveway for the existing dwelling and a two-car gar, garage along with a gravel and brick parking area turnaround. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking, ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the owners have submitted a signed and notarized statement that they will be occupying one of the units at 418 Country Way. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by town water and onsite septic system. DPW requirements for water connections will be met. The Board, Board of Health requirements for the septic system will be met with a bedroom in the house is decommissioned, and a deed restriction is given for a four-bedroom septic system to the Board of Health. Eleven, the applicant, the application meets the standards of the Zone, um, Situate Zoning Bylaw for the accessory dwelling special permit. Okay, do we get a second, Shari, for the findings?
Can I make a comment before?
Yes.
Okay, in there, you said that this is in addition to the two-car garage. Can that be changed to say the existing garage is going to be razed and reconstructed?
I, I thought that maybe the sentence should be reworded. The proposed accessory dwelling is supposed to be located on the second floor to be added to an existing detached garage to be rebuilt.
Yeah, just something so that it's clear that the garage is coming down.
Right.
And, and that's, the rest of it's perfect.
All right.
Okay. So, a second as amended?
Yes. Is there a second as amended?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Ms. Burbine, Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein.
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, all in favor for finding the fact.
I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at 418 Country Way with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the Planning Board after a public hearing on 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall be, shall substantially conform to Plan NO-4502 by Wine Master Home Design, consisting of a cover sheet, foundation one of four, main floor two of four, cross-sections three of four, elevations four of four, with sheet four of four to include outside stairs shown on elevations received 12/16/20. Existing conditions plan number 418 Country Way, Assessor's Parcel 32-8-9, Situate, Mass, dated June 1, 2020, prepared by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., and proposed accessory dwelling plan by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., dated 1/14/21. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the Planning Board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that he or she is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1st yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, Zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling, including eliminating one bedroom from the primary dwelling and converting it to an office with no closet. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW Water Division for the accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on abutting properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Ten, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silt sock shall be used as necessary. Is there a second for discussion? Further discussion, additions, corrections?
All set.
All set? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein.
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, all in favor unanimous.
This is the easiest accessory apartment we've had in a long time.
That's one in a row. Can I go have my drink now?
No.
I'd like to thank Shari and Karen, because, uh, this was kind of rushed thing at the last minute, and they did a lot to help today, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm going to go have my drink.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just remember that Jamie's is closed.
I know. Thank you, guys. Stay healthy.
You too. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is our works, zoning workshop. Can we start that a little early, Karen?
Yes, we can. Our consultant, Chris Kujel from MAPC is present on the line, and, um, And um, you know, he intends to do a slideshow presentation. Um, basically, if I could just um kind of give a little bit of a timeline to the planning board before he starts. Um, we were working on North Situate um up until you know, last January where you also had a zoning workshop. There was uh several meetings prior to that. And then, you know, COVID hit and Brad left, so we put the um, we put North Situate on hold. And since about, since midsummer, Chris and I have been working on the bylaw along with um Sue DePisa of the um EDC to try to get this in shape to bring to town meeting um this time around. Um, it's substantially the same as last year. We have made several improvements. And I will let um I'll let Chris like go into all that.
Wow.
It's all right. We got it.
I'm gonna share my screen. Hi, everybody.
Hi there.
I think you can all see that. Um, well, thank you for having me tonight. I just came from a meeting in Ashland, so I guess
Oh, hi.
Zoom is we get to move virtually very quickly. Um, so I also know that you've had a number of items on your agenda already tonight, so I will try and be as efficient as possible as I go through these slides and then obviously can go back for any discussion that that you'd like. So, starting off, as I'm sure you realize now, you know, the purpose of this project has been um a rezoning effort for for North Situate Village to bring it in um under the framework of the village center and neighborhood, the V C N zoning that you have. Um, obviously, in North Situate, as you all know, the the lack of sewer right now is kind of a major impediment um to to redevelopment. Um, but the the thought was and the plan was that, you know, once sewer comes in, that there's a good chance that there's going to be um a lot of interest in redevelopment. And by having the zoning in place ahead of time, it allows the town to kind of um not be reactive, to kind of already have set what it wants. Um, um, and so that landowners already know kind of what the rules will be. Um, and those rules essentially are to create development that fits within a a New England-style village that um that North Situate is. And frankly, this new zoning, I think it expands the options for landowners um in terms of its redevelopment opportunities. Um, as we've kind of, as Karen mentioned, this has been um maybe a longer process than I think we originally intended. Um, one of the benefits to that is we've now have the ability, there's been some time since the V C N was adopted and some projects in Green Bush have gone in and some issues have come up from that. And so we've kind of expanded the scope slightly to help um clean up and fix some of the issues and I'll I'll mention briefly what some of those are. And then finally, we we've kind of found some other issues, mainly sort of administrative, more minor issues in the bylaw that we also are taking this opportunity to fix. Um, so Karen already mentioned kind of the the kind of the timeline and so I won't kind of um belabor the point. Um, but I I would just mention, all of this sort of originally started back from a visioning effort that the town underwent several years ago. Um, and and that then led into this process for the zoning. Um, as Karen mentioned, we had a number of forums and stakeholder meetings. The first forum, which was held, it'll end up being about a two-year process um by the time spring meeting comes around. Um, that was very well attended. I think there were over two hundred attendees. We were able to get a lot of great feedback at that meeting. Um, and then after the hiatus, we were now obviously picking things up again. So, just a couple kind of, I guess, stats about the district. There we go. Uh, so this area, um, this proposed district, uh, it's it's about forty-nine parcels over thirty-six acres. Um, and and that's actually a pretty good-sized um village district. Just to give a a little bit of a comparison, I'm doing a project in um one of Concord's um village areas and it's only fifteen acres. So, so this is a good-sized district. The density of this area, um, as measured by floor area ratio, it's extremely low at zero um point zero nine, lower than you probably would expect for kind of a village-like setting. Um, and again, I think a big part of that is just the the lack of sewer that has inhibited redevelopment, um, but I think it does show a lot of opportunity. And then the other thing I would maybe just mention is that the daily boardings, this number is a little bit old. I'm not sure what the most current is, but um, when I got this data, it was three hundred and thirty-five daily boardings. That's actually quite, quite high, I would say. Um, given the location from Boston and and I think what that speaks to is that there would be a lot of demand for um housing opportunities above commercial where people can walk to the station, um, take the train to work, come back, you know, do some, you know, their you know, everyday errands or grab a bite to eat right within the district and and then be home all without stepping in the car. So I think it's it's really a great opportunity that this has, this area. Uh, this um vision statement came from that original vision report and so we kind of kept this as a basis in the back of our minds. And it essentially says that North Situate will grow um into a vibrant center through improvements um in private investments and and public improvements. And then we just sort of head back um at the beginning of the process, kind of tried to show sort of how that could play out um as redevelopment occurs and in sort of your outer parts of the district, there would be opportunities for new types of um lower-scale housing. Um, whereas then in the kind of more core area, there's opportunities for commercial and mixed-use developments that that focus on the sort of New England principles of a village. So we've received a lot of public input, um, especially at that first forum where I said, I think there were over two hundred people. Uh, we did, for those who recall, we did live um real-time polling for a number of questions and that gave a lot of really great um input in real time. So I'll just go through a few of those kind of points now. Uh, one thing we asked was, you know, in terms of priorities, should all future development actually follow these New England, you know, traditional village patterns that I've been mentioning, um, you know, and I think in many ways this was sort of confirming what we expected, but at least this way we we can now back that up and and you know, you can see the percentage is overwhelming that people um agreed or strongly agreed with that notion. So I think that was helpful to see. We also asked about housing and we asked about, you know, should this be an opportunity for the town to diversify the types of housing it has within town? And again, the um, the percentage was overwhelming that agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. Um, so it was really a strong consensus. We then showed a number of buildings to see what people liked. Um, and so I'm just showing um two that people really liked. You can see ninety-four percent either liked or loved this type of building. Um, and this one as well had the same different sort of breakdown between like and love, but the same overall ninety-four percent, um, you know, like this. So, these types of buildings, I mean, in terms of scale and style setbacks, I think provide a great sort of um basis for for what the future, what people are expecting in North Situate.
Did you show them stuff they didn't like?
Yes, there were a number of things that people didn't like. I think in Canton, there were some buildings that got visceral reactions of dislike.
Gotcha.
Um, so now turning to specifics, a little bit of of the zoning. Um, so again, North Situate would become part of the town's B C N framework. Um, and I think I'll probably mention a few points here that as the planning board, you probably already know all this, but um if there are members of the public, this might be a little bit helpful. Um, so again, the V C N was adopted back in two thousand nineteen and it started with Green Bush as the first village. Um, that was part of that, this framework. And then the town's idea was that it would incrementally add additional villages within that framework and and North Situate would be the the second one. Um, and so this framework um basically provides these overarching requirements. And then it allows some sort of a nuance between the different villages so that each one's not the same because it's different characters and scales. So it allows for that um that nuance. Um, and also within each village, it allows for the creation of sub-districts so that, again, different, you can have different characters within um the district. And I think that's one of the great benefits to this um format and that we've applied to North Situate as well. Um, the V C N has standards of of the kind of typical zoning things that you would expect, such as, you know, parking requirements. Um, but the V C N is also a um form-based code approach. And so what that means is that it places a much greater emphasis on the design, um, the design of the buildings themselves, uh, as well as the overall urban design and the sort of interplay of the private and the public realm. Um, going so far as to, in in Situate's case, to require um specific types of buildings that are allowed. So, here's a map and, you know, we can come back to this after of the proposed district, um, which we are proposing to sub-districts. Um, so one is the village center, which you can see is in the gray area. And then what we're calling an outer village. So that's kind of the, again, um, you can see where that goes along Gannett Road and along Country Way um further out. And, you know, one of the things that really came through strong through the public process was a concern to ensure that North Situate remains a commercial center. And so out of that concern, I think we wanted to kind of put in restrictions to ensure that residential development doesn't displace um commercial development. And I think that frankly, you know, residential development is in such a high demand that I think, you know, you're right to be concerned about that um as a concern. So, um, I'll explain a little bit more how we um divided that up within the two sub-districts. Um, so it's a form-based code approach, but it still has uses. I think a pure form-based code um really doesn't play into uses much, but um in in the spy law, the uses is still a, this is sort of a hybrid approach. Um, so, you know, generally speaking, the um intent was to be flexible, to allow really a a wide array of uses that that would be compatible with creating a walkable mixed-use district. Um, the village center, as I mentioned, has additional restrictions to to help ensure that residential doesn't displace commercial uses. Um, obviously, any existing uses would be grandfathered in. Um, and then, as I mentioned, within the V C N, a property has to comply, not only with the use but also with the the building type, form of the building. So, for the village center, uh, like I said, that that's considered sort of the commercial core part of this district. And it's intended to promote commercial activities, um, especially the small and local businesses, um, as well as allowing the mixed-use development and really just encouraging walkability overall. So there are three building types that are allowed here. Um, mixed-use buildings, which is, again, ground floor would be some sort of commercial, could be retail, could be a restaurant, could be other types of commercial. And then the upper-level floors are often residential, but they could also be office, um, or, you know, all the types of commercial above that. Um, commercial buildings are allowed, of course, in the commercial district. Um, and live-work is is kind of a subset, a specific type of of a mixed-use building. In the outer district, this is where we're sort of relaxing those um restrictions on commercial. Um, and and here we're allowing additional types of buildings. So the the mixed-use, the commercial, the live-work, they're still allowed within this other area, this outer village. But we're adding additional types of residential buildings that are allowed. Cottage clusters, which are small homes clustered together. Um, the single-family attached, which are essentially townhomes, um, and then multifamily, which would require a special permit. Um, and I think, you know, that it is important here because um for two reasons. One is that I think in terms of why would it make sense to require every building to be mixed-use or commercial? That there's frankly, just likely not enough demand in this area to to support that. And having vacant properties is going to be much worse. Um, the other reason is by allowing the residential within this area, um, it's it's highly walkable and close to the core part of the village. Um, and that means that that's, those are people who now can support those businesses. So I think it creates this nice sort of virtuous cycle that these people will support the village um businesses and create vibrancy to this area. Um, and then also finally, the other mention, the other type of building that's allowed is what's called gas backwards, which is a gas station, but with a a different type of arrangement that makes it a little bit more walkable. Um, less auto-centric than than traditional gas station designs. Um, in terms of density, um, you know, Karen gave a lot of input on this. Um, and, you know, the the general feeling was this should not be as dense as a place like Situate Harbor. Um, so we we came up with densities that that tracks closer to what's being proposed or what is in, I should say, the Green Bush Driftway Gateway District. Um, there's, you know, there's base uh allowance for density and then um there's a special permit allowance based, that that's essentially a density bonus um based upon um the applicant meeting a number of various criteria. The bottom half of the slide, um, these are some of the modifications that are specific to North Situate. So the way that the bylaw is developed, there are overarching standards for, you know, based upon the type of building um that apply everywhere, but then within what situate, we want to make some changes um for either because through the visual preference survey. Um, it it seemed like people had a slightly different desire than what was kind of done for the overarching V C N. Um, or just because the the parcels in North Situate are are kind of quite different. Um, many of them are quite small. And so to make projects actually be feasible, um, we made a made a few changes and we, again, I'm happy to come back to this slide to talk about some of the specifics if people are interested. And then the final thing I'd mention before I pause is, um, again, we made some changes to the overall V C N. Um, mostly this was to help clarify some issues that um it currently exist. Uh, for example, um, there is some confusion, I think, in the bylaw between what is a design standard, which means it's actually required versus a design guideline, which is either more aspirational or qualitative and overall advisory. So we've now um regrouped those um in this areas. We didn't add content, but we've made changes to how it's grouped to clarify what is the standard and what is a guideline um and to allow deviations from that. Um, and we've noted that, um, again, there was some question about can the planning board waive some of the standards? Um, and so we're noting that, yes, you can, except for, for example, height cannot be waived. Um, there were also some issues with the parking requirements. And then there were just some minor things that we were kind of cleaning up. There were references to this as an ordinance throughout um the V C N and you know, ordinances, ordinances are for cities, bylaws are for towns. We made those changes. And then other parts of the bylaw, again, we were just cleaning up things. There were a number of references to districts that no longer actually exist within the town. So we were able to take those out. Um, we made some other changes to some of the references, um, as well to um the V C N, et cetera. So that's everything. So I will stop there. Um, hope that wasn't too long and and then take your questions and comments.
If I can make one comment before we get into the other comments. Um, Chris has spent a lot of time revising that section seven fifty, the standards and guidelines. Um, because it's really hard to write decisions based on the way it's organized now. And I've got to tell you, the way I think it's reorganized is much more user-friendly so that the, you know, height stuff is together. It just makes more sense for somebody who's trying to actually use the bylaw.
Okay, excellent. All right. Chris, great presentation. Thank you.
Hey, Chris, I I I have a question for you, Chris. Um, can you, oh, you dropped it off. You have the sort of the village center and then the outer village. How did you, how did you make a decision on the borders there?
What what? I can, I can go back to that. Um, you know, this was in conversation primarily um with was twofold, I would say. One was just looking at what the character of the area today and where it like feels more, for lack of a better word, urban versus where it sort of transitions to being a little bit less dense. Um, you know, that was just sort of through, you know, being on-site. And then the other part of that was, you know, Brad's no longer here, but he weighed in on in terms of where the actual boundaries should go. Um, and that's between sub-districts. In terms of the overall district and and where they were, um, we followed the underlying existing business zoning, I believe. Um, we we want to make sure we, and Karen can correct that if I'm not completely right, but we we did want to emphasize that we did not encroach on any existing um residential district parts, parcels.
Well, except what they, what he did is he corrected some of the parts that were in two different zoning districts. So that they now are all in one zoning district and most of them are now And most of them are now in the business district. We had a couple lots that were, half of it was business, half of it was residential. And so it's been moved all into the business. So it's all in one district now, which I think is a very good improvement.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, I'm looking really on east of the post office there where Seven-Eleven and Cosmos is and stuff. And I'm just surprised that's kind of still, that's in the Outer Village as opposed to part of the Core Village. But just, just really wondering how you made those decisions.
Yeah, you know, again, like I said, Brad was the one that weighed in and he's obviously not here anymore since he, of course, knows this area much better than I do. So, you know, again, if I'm happy to make changes to the boundaries, if that's what, you know, people.
No, I wasn't asking changes. I was trying to understand the the logic of drawing the line there.
Yeah.
I think he, we tried to keep, I think he tried to keep the line, Steve, where you had the most, the most downtown business right there in North Situate Village proper, knowing that you wanted mixed-use there. And you wanted commercial and you wanted actual business there. And the outer part, you get into a little bit more residential already. And I think that was part of the logic in where the line was drawn.
There's a tremendous amount of space to, as you look at the post office, that big, huge parking lot, and then you have Seven-Eleven. And next to that, you have Anderson Fuel and then a few residential dwellings. Excuse me?
Is in Cosmos in there as well?
I said that.
The pizza shop?
Yep, it's there. Cosmos, you've got Seven-Eleven, Cosmos, and Anderson Fuel. So there's a lot of room there to have a mixed residential area. Across the street, next to where you see Cersei's Grotto, which is the village marketplace, you have a big stretch. There's a lot of businesses in there. There's some landscaping. It used to be, it's a lot of storage stuff in that particular area. And when you go across to the other side, Countryway, you've got Lincoln Park, the T parking lot and so on. I believe it goes right up to the Cohasset line. So there are opportunities in there as well for added residential, multi-unit housing. There is a big apartment complex right there, almost on the line. So it's, you know, a lot of it does make a tremendous amount of sense. Okay, anything else before we open it up to the public? Okay, comment, public comment?
Thanks, sweetie.
My on, Char?
Yes.
Yeah, just remember to identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Okay, hi, I'm Aaron Cutler. I'm, I live at fifty-eight Mordecai Lincoln, so right behind all this in North Situate. And I also have a building that I just bought at four hundred Gannett, which is the old Hingham Institution for Savings Bank building. And I I love this. It looks great. I I wonder, my biggest question is about the, I mean, from my perspective is the parking. Like, I I don't know where, if we had, if we were able to do a three-story building with commercial on two stories and maybe residential on one that, you know, how we would accommodate the the parking needs of our tenants and or people, other people who live there.
Yeah, I mean, parking is always a major challenge in these areas, especially because I know there are a lot of smaller parcels. You know, one thing I would say, I think the, we didn't actually, as part of this project, really touched the parking that was already created as part of the original V C N. And and I would say that it is, you know, I think fairly progressive in terms of allowing for shared uses and whatnot. Excusing, I have my son knocking on the store during this presentation.
Wait, all right.
But so let me continue on that. So that the numbers for parking are, I mean, it's been revised for the V C N, so it's less parking. And there is the opportunity for the shared parking. And it's, it's basically one space per one-bedroom unit in a, for residential. So and the square footage for retail commercial has been increased. So you only need one space per four hundred square feet, which accounts for, you know, it's less than the traditional parking that's required in the, under the normal circumstances. So we've tried to take some of that into account. There will have to be shared parking. There is the one public parking lot. There is street parking as well. But some basic parking is going to have to be required with every development.
Yeah. What about, can I ask one other question about a side? Is there gonna, is there, is there any possibility of getting a sidewalk from, you know, the the light down to, say, Mordecai Lincoln? I mean, I feel like that with the train station there. And if you're going to redevelop all the, if you're going to redevelop some areas down there, it would make sense, I feel like, to have a sidewalk going all the way down toward, like toward the Cohasset border.
Aaron, I have to tell you that I have tried over the last fifteen years to get the sidewalk to extend from the T station down to the Cohasset line. And as a matter of fact, at one point, it was all set. All we had to do was come up with the engineering and money would be forthcoming from Mass Highway. But it was felt that why did we want to benefit Cohasset, which is really stupid? But at any rate, who is to say that as time goes by with development, et cetera, that as sort of a, you know, somebody would would put money toward that sidewalk?
And maybe some mitigation with development.
Yes, right. Development mitigation that we're trying to do in Green Bush so that that sidewalk could come into play at some.
Sounds great. It looks awesome. I really think you guys did a wonderful job. So I'm hoping, hoping it comes together.
Well, I hope it comes together too. I, for one, really would like to have this in place before we get sewer. And believe me, we will get sewer.
I love to hear that, too.
Now, we will get it. It's just a matter of time.
Well, don't forget to go to town meeting to vote for it.
Right, exactly, Steve.
Okay, ready for the next question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, it's Stacy Jones-Carry and my husband, Bill Carey. We own, we live at seven oh eight Countryway and we own seven six one Countryway, which is my shop, Stacy's Stitches, the whole building. And I just wanted to say that you guys did a phenomenal job. It looks fantastic. Bill and I, you know, our plan is to, you know, retain the aesthetic and the, and the, of the antique building we've bought. And and we're not planning on making any changes, but we're looking forward to seeing our neighborhood change since we not only own a business there, but also, you know, are are part of the neighborhood. So we're just really, really excited and want to thank you all for your efforts.
Okay, next. Who else do we have? Anyone?
I don't see any other questions or comments.
Come on, after. No, that's it?
That's it, I believe.
Okay. All right, well, Chris, you did an incredible job. And I like the way you fixed the map, which was really, I think, important so that we all had something to key in on. And so the next thing, we'll have a public hearing the eleventh of February. And we'll go from there and it'll go before town meeting. And hopefully, it will be a done deal.
So everyone should try to encourage people to participate in the public hearing if they have any concerns, positive or negative, and to come to town meeting and participate and try to vote this zoning through.
Yes.
Someone, we have a question.
All right. Who?
It's Joe Murphy. I live at twenty-six Surfside Road. And I am representing my father-in-law, Bob Mullen, who owns property along with the Percy family, Mary Lewis, et cetera. My question is a procedural question. So when this gets approved at town meeting, these bylaws then go in, correct?
Correct.
And that's that's forward planning, which we all love, right? For all the reasons that everybody stated, great job, everybody, you know, full support. Then the question becomes, in the town meeting, and I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, will the sewer be voted at the same time?
No, no, no. The sewer, we are in the process of, and who knows where Cohasset is in all of this. We tried to put together a regional between Hull, Cohasset, and Situate. And that's still up in the air. There's also the possibility with searing Oceanside that that will take out more ionized. So maybe eventually, we will be able to hook up. We do, as you know, have that pipe that runs from North Situate down to the treatment plant. So there are a lot, there are a lot of different things that are on the table. And I feel hopeful, very hopeful, that within three to five years, we will have sewer in North Situate.
Oh, okay. Thank you for the fact that you'll also need pretty significant growth water as well.
Yes, water is paramount.
Thank you. Just getting perspective on the process.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments out there? All right. I don't see any.
Okay. Anything further from the board before we close this up? All right, a great job, both Karen and Chris. Terrific. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, take care. All right, I guess that's it then.
I believe so. We did planning and development report. We should be all done.
We're done. Anything else from anybody? Nothing? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous.
Thank you, Seth.
You've got it, you've got it. Now, Char, you want to stick around for just a second?
Yep.